We are here for a study session for our budget for the 2023, 2024. I call this to order, and now could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call, please.
Certainly. Councilperson's Bear.
Here.
Dupre.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Salcedo.
Here.
Sohr.
Yes, here.
Tobin. Nope. And Mayor Higgins.
Here. Okay, as I said earlier, we are here for the budget, so I'm gonna turn this over to the city manager.
Yep, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa pretty quickly, but I do kinda wanna touch, touch off a little bit. Here we are, budget season again. First, I wanna acknowledge the work of Lisa and her team to put this document together, to get the information, to coordinate with departments, which, as many of you may or may not know, coordinating with the multiple different departments we have can be challenging at times because there's so many and so many personalities involved. But Lisa and her team have done a fantastic job again this year. So, couple notes before I hand it over. The budget document this year does look a little bit different. You may notice it's a little thicker. We have some more information in here this year. We have, right after my transmittal letter to you, I've included our mission statement. I've included the strategic plan that was adopted last year. We also have included the financial policies that were adopted towards the end of last year, beginning of this year. All of this is an effort for our budget document to include a lot more of the information that bonders will be looking for, the rating agencies look for in a budget document as we move forward with some of these major products we're looking at. Also, at the end of the budget document, you will find the capital improvement plan. This has been a big undertaking. This, you know, obviously, the 40 pages or so of that actually take up a good chunk of why this document is as thick as it is this year. But, no, this was a big one, right? This was a broader process for planning capital projects. No longer are we just going to allocate this much money for road resurfacing, this much money for water main replacement, this much money for concrete repair. We actually have documented, these are the projects we're intending to accomplish this year. These are the roads that are gonna be resurfaced. These are the roads that we're gonna do reconstruction on. That way, at the end of the year, we can look, did we accomplish those goals? Was that enough funding for what we were doing? Residents can look and see, okay, my road isn't being done this year, but I can find it on the capital improvement program. It is three years away, right? It's not ambiguous anymore what it is the city is doing with taxpayer money. And this was, this was a big effort. This was really the first time we've looked at it this way, and it was not easy. It's technically still not complete because we do have the planning commission to go to one last time, but after the last meeting, they were very, very supportive, and I don't anticipate any issues. But if there are, we'll make some changes before this eventually comes back to you for final approval of the budget. Couple other major things that are happening this year, we're looking, this document reflects the fact that code enforcement is being reorganized. A major undertaking again, not just for the directly involved departments, right? The police and building, but for our support departments, for finance. Trying to figure out how this was all gonna shake out at the time they're trying to handle the budget was not easy. For HR, the amount of hours we've spent trying to figure out how this is all working out, this is a big undertaking for the city, but it's reflected here. Also, and I'm probably stepping on some of Lisa's toes here, but this year, we are moving forward for the first time since COVID on funding capital improvements in the general fund. We have spent the last couple of years being very tentative because we didn't know what was coming. We didn't know about court revenue. We didn't know what was happening with the pandemic, and so we've held off on general fund capital expenditures. Thankfully, we've been very lucky. We've done a really good job controlling departmental expenditures. Lisa's team has done a very good job of underestimating revenue and keeping the departments in line on their budgets, but we've been able to build up a fund balance, and some of that is due to not expending capital over the last couple of years. So we are gonna be using some fund balance to do these one-off projects that will either improve operations, improve service, or extend the useful life of buildings. These are the types of things. Our capital improvement policy indicates as good use as a fund balance, right? And our fund balance policy, they tie together here. So, without further ado, I won't get into each fund because I know Lisa has a lovely presentation ready to go, so without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me present the budget. As James, I will repeat some of what James said. Tonight is really intended to be, I'm gonna do an overview of the budget, kinda give you the brief highlights of everything. Fortunately, this, the last couple of years have turned out better than we had thought they may. It is nice to be able to build a little bit of cushion in the budget. It's not overly cushioned by far, but we are able, again, as James said, to do some capital planning this year from the general fund, which we haven't done for several years. There's, you know, there's not a lot of fluff in the budget, and we cut that out several years ago as our fund balance began to decline, but fortunately, we are able to fund all of the same positions. All of the contract increases are included in the budget, and we do have the capital recommendations this year. So I will start with an overview of the budget, and then I think tonight, because there are some new members on council that haven't seen the budget document, and it is a little bit bigger this year. At the end, I'm just gonna do an overview of like what you can look for in the budget, just to get you familiar with it. We can always schedule another session. We have had years where we've gone into more detail of what's in the budget document. It gets a little bit tedious, so we kind of cut back on doing that, and we do more of an overview. If council wishes, we can always do that, or I'd be happy to meet with any council members one-on-one if you wanna go through something. And of course, there's, you know, if there's questions, if you wanna email, I can send the answers out to everyone. So I will go ahead and do the presentation, and then I'll get into the budget booklet after. So I'm gonna start by talking a little bit about the budget process to get you familiar with how it works. We do actually start in November with the capital planning, so those forms are sent out to the departments to begin planning for the upcoming year and future years as to what their capital needs will be. And then in December and January, the departments submit their line item requests, so those would be their supplies and materials and those types of things. They do enter, oops, a little too far. They enter those in, and then we begin reviewing them, and in the meantime, finance is working on revenue projections as those come out from the state and the various sources. And then in March, the city manager and myself and Lisa Jones from my office, we met with each of the departments and went through their budget requests, got a better understanding of what they were looking for, talked about some things maybe we couldn't do this year that might have to be pushed out a little bit. The departments do a great job on working with us. Those first few years, when things really started to decline, it was very tough on everyone, but everybody has really worked well with us on that. And then tonight's the budget presentation. We will have the public hearing on May 15th, and then council will adopt the budget on June 5th. So an overview of the general fund, the total revenue projections are just over $26 million. The appropriations set at $26 million as well, and we do have 500,000, just over 500,000 estimated to use from fund balance to budget for those capital needs. I will go into a little more detail on what those are for the year. Now, this is, keeping in mind that this is if every expenditure that is budgeted for is spent. That usually doesn't happen, so hopefully, we don't have to use that money from fund balances if everything else stays on track. The current year that we're in, just to give you an idea, the revenue projections were a little bit lower, as well as the expenditures at just over, just under $26 million. We are estimating this year, small use of fund balance of $56,000. Probably won't happen, again, because most departments don't spend every dollar that's budgeted. Just an overview of the fund balance and where we're at. We have been very fortunate from where we came from several years ago with an emergency manager that we've been able to build our fund balance up. As you know, our policy, or may not know, our policy is set at 20% to have that cash on hand, so we can make sure we're always covering all of our expenditures. We're currently at 29%. At the beginning of the year, we'll stay right at about the 29%, and then we'll go down slightly to 26%. Again, that's part of the reason why we built up that fund balance is to cover those items that we have to, so those are the capital needs of the city. And now I'm gonna touch on some of the budget highlights in the general fund. On the revenue side, the overall revenues anticipated to increase about 1%, so not much has changed this year. Property taxes are projected at 458,000 increase. We are somewhat conservative. Luckily, the taxable value has gone up, but we also have a headly rollback, and we know there'll be some border review adjustments as the year goes on, so should be right around $450,000. And then we do have some additional revenue built into the building department due to the code enforcement taking over because there's going to be many items that are flagged that they have to get permits for, so we anticipate that the revenue in that department will slightly increase. Revenue sharing is once again projected to go up about $100,000. The last, probably two years, I believe, we've had pretty good chunks in that going up. Several years ago, it was constantly going down, so that's a good sign. Based on the state's projections, it looks like about $100,000. And then we should bring in an additional $100,000 as we did this year for the marijuana On the expenditure side, the overall expenditures are increasing by about $800,000, and some of those items include the buildings and grounds department. There's some increased needs there for them to fix buildings. We have the lawn maintenance contract in there, the cleaning for the various buildings. It's really not much of a jump in there, it's mostly related to the building costs. The police department does show an increase from the amended budget for the year, but that's because we currently, excuse me, currently don't have all of the positions filled, so we're once again budgeting. We anticipate that they will all be filled. It looks like we're on good track for that, so that's why that shows a slight increase. And the fire department is actually a little bit lower. They had quite a bit of overtime this year because of staffing issues. We also had items budgeted for new hires, like their gear and uniforms and those sorts of things that are not in there next year. The parks and forestry division has a slight increase. We are trying to put a little bit more money into the parks this upcoming year to do some maintenance that's much needed. And then if you look in the budget and you see the parks and rec department, it looks like there's a big increase there, but that's really related to the director and the assistant director being, the way their wages are charged out between parks and rec and the community center, so I just wanted to kinda highlight that in case anybody sees that. And then, as James said, we do have the new code enforcement division set up within the budget. Worked with John a lot on that, on trying to anticipate what those costs will be for the upcoming year. We also had to shift a few things that were already in the budget related to the LP Pride program. So on the revenue side, that revenue now for tall grass violations and those sorts of things is built into the code enforcement division, as well as on the expenditure side, paying the contractor for those same items. And then we do continue to fully fund our MERS and our police and fire pensions. That's always been a struggle for the city, but we've, we've been able to do that every year, which is good, and we do have the new grant that we're going to be applying for, which will be wonderful, and that will help that. And then we still have the retiree healthcare obligations. We're still able to keep that under the 6% cap that's in the judgment, so that's staying on track. And a lot of it's due to aging up, some of the costs are going down on the other end of it, but we're well within that range. And then other than that, in the general fund, most departments are pretty relatively the same. They've, there's not much changes. Again, all the departments do a great job of managing their budgets. And to talk a little bit about the capital, again, we haven't been able to address those items for several years, so we are anticipating using $500,500 for the upcoming year. That plan was submitted to the planning commission, and they'll adopt it, and it'll be part of the budget that council will adopt. So just to touch on what those items are, the fire department apron reconstruction, the apparatus room, I'm sorry, the apparatus room floor at the fire department. The court building needs new doors, so those will be replaced. The control system at the ice arena. We are going to replace the heart monitors. I believe that's within the buildings, right, James?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the sidewalk replacement program. We have been able to fund that with some of the revenue coming in from previous years, but we're upping it this year to stay on track. Our insurance company highly recommends that as well. So fortunately, we do have the money this year, and we'll continue, our goal is to continue each year to fund capital needs. You know, they're prioritized, and we will continue to do that. So now I'm gonna touch on some of the other funds of the city. Major and local road fund, that's a special revenue fund. Those sources come from the gas tax that everyone talks about, so the city gets their portion of that. That's continued to have increases over the last few years. We are anticipating another increase in the major road funds of 164,000, and the local road funds, that one barely, just over $2,000. So on the appropriations side, there is quite a bit of an increase on the major roads that's primarily due to the projects that we have planned, as well as material costs within, for salts and cold patch and all of those types of items. And again, I just touched on why the increases are there on the expenditure side, and we do have $300,000 this year budgeted for tree trims and removals, up slightly from the current year of 268,000. And then the capital outlay from those funds is budgeted at 1.9 million. And I just wanted to kinda highlight, I did this last year as well, I know there's always a lot of talk from people, what are you doing with the roads? We also have the separate road fund from the millage, but this is just the Act 51 portion. So over the last five years, we've put just shy of $10 million into the roads out of these funds, so it's, it's a little bit more in your face with that when you see it there because everybody thinks that we're, you know, because we do have so many roads that need to be addressed, it's kind of feels sometimes like we're not doing much, but we have spent quite a bit of money on those. And the water and sewer fund, I know this is always a fun one to talk about. The revenue projections are up, but as you'll see, I'll go into talk about the rates. The appropriations are just over, just shy of 16 million. We are planning to increase the rates about 7%. It would have been much higher. As you know, Plant Moran did the water rate study a couple of years ago, and there's just so many capital needs within the fund, as well as just regular operations, so it would have been much higher if we hadn't received those ARPA funds, so that has really helped the fund out substantially. And in the capital plan for those funds, we are planning this year to do 1.759 of lead service line replacements, and then replace the roof at the River Drive pump station for 20,000, and then purchase a new freight liner for the department at 167,000. So this next slide just shows the breakdown of the rates for the current year and the proposed rates. As you look at them, there's, the regular water and sewer rates are going up, but there's a couple that, there's one that actually is going down, the sewer improvements, but the water capital is going up. That's because we have the 1.7 million for the lead service lines, so that's on the water side of things. So because of all of the ARPA funds, we're doing more of the sewer projects with that money, so that rate for the sewer improvements, but overall, it's about a 7% increase. And then in the sanitation fund, so this is for garbage pickup and the recycling fees, we have revenue at 3.2 and the appropriations at 3 million. I am proposing to keep the rates the same this year. There's just a little bit of a shift in how they're broken out. The current rubbish fee is 3699, and the proposed fee is 3657, and those are per quarter, and that covers just the cost of the rubbish collection, the yard waste, and the tipping fees to Riverview. And then the recycling is going from 1585 to 1627, and overall, it's still staying at 5284, it's just the breakdown. Just to talk about some of the other funds, I won't read off the numbers specifically, but we have the cable fund, so the city does collect fees from the cable providers. Throughout the years, those have gone down substantially as people cancel their cable, but there is the franchise fee on those bills that the city collects. So we do bring in about 113,000. This is the general fund portion. There's also a portion that goes, I'm sorry, that's, this is the cable portion, there's also a portion that goes into the general fund. So that, and then the drug and forfeiture fund, those are from the seizures at the police department. The fleet is the motor pool, as some people call it, the fleet fund, that's an internal service fund, so all of, everything for that fund is funded by all of the departments that have vehicles. So all the fuel, the repairs, those types of things are paid out of this fund, and then it's charged back to all the various departments. And then the IT fund is the internal services fund, so that's our network server, our email, all of those types of things, and that's funded the same way by all of the departments. And just to touch a little bit on some of the other capital projects planned for the year, we do have 228,000 for the forfeiture, drug and forfeiture fund, which includes purchasing new body cameras, a live scan, flock cameras, and I believe there's like two new vehicles in there. And then in the Act 51 funds, again, it's 1.9 million. Right now, about 1.7 million of that is directly allocated. And then we have 1.9 million in the water and sewer fund, and then the fleet fund, we have about $200,000 in vehicle purchases planned for the year. So that is the end of the slideshow. I will go in now unless you wanna, if you have any questions now, or I can go through the budget book and just kind of highlight some items in there.
Do we have any questions from the slide?
I do.
All right.
Lisa, well, maybe the chief could answer. Live scan, what is that? I don't think I've heard that one before.
That is a fingerprinting machine.
Okay. Okay.
To the chair. Which departments are gonna get the four vehicles?
No DPS is willing to.
Yeah, I know that we talked about that one.
So under the fleet maintenance, there's, let's see, police have, looks like two, couple unmarked in there, and then a couple in the DPS with the trucks.
Are those the ones that are in order?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. And then under the apron on the fire department, did that come out of ARPA funds, or is that coming out of our general fund?
This one's the general fund. This is gonna be the north side apron. So right now, the ARPA fund's covered, doing the east side, and then just gonna finish the job.
Okay, then I don't remember hearing about the court door replacement or the ice arena control systems until tonight. I don't know when that was brought into play, but I didn't hear about it before tonight, so, and I'm a little worried about the water increase, the 7% increase, that's not gonna go over well with the residents, and that's, it's more that they're gonna have to deal with, so that's all I have right now.
To the chair. Go ahead. Go ahead.
We have 200,000 allocated for the fleet, correct?
Correct.
And DPS wants a truck at 145,000, a freight liner?
That, no, the freight liner is budgeted out of the water and sewer fund. It would have came out of there anyway, it's just directly being budgeted in the water and sewer fund rather than the fleet.
Thank you.
But either way, it would have backcharged.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
If I could, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
The freight liner, Lisa, because that was one of my questions, what do we use a freight liner for?
James may know more than me.
These are pretty, pretty good-sized trucks. These are your dump trucks, basically.
Okay.
So often, it's used on a water break site to put concrete into, to bring loads of topsoil and everything over. It's a very versatile vehicle, and especially vehicles of that size anymore, freight liners is one of the more popular ways to go.
Okay, thank you.
Semi.
Yes.
It's a semi.
Okay.
So it's got the big, long trailer on the back of it.
Thank you.
Fifth wheel.
One more question. On the sidewalk replacement program, if we're putting more money into it, are we extending it?
Yes, yes. Yep, that was one of the items that John had talked to James and myself about, was doing more.
Okay.
And we have some good pricing from the contractor as well.
Okay.
And then we're also able to roll in some additional work as we bring in collecting on the previous year's sidewalk programs, so we'll roll that right back into the sidewalk program. This is just the allocated directly funds.
Very good. Any idea, Lisa, since we're talking about that, where we're at as far as the sidewalk program, like how many, because we've been doing it now, what, is it five years?
Yeah, and I don't have the answer to that. Can definitely find out. I know it's, it's kinda like our roads, like you're kinda like, I feel like you're spending tons, but you're really getting like a little bit done.
I wanted to be honest, for the, until now, we've been spending about 50,000 a year, right? Which, when you think about how, like, the square footage of the city, that's really not a lot.
Exactly.
Especially for the amount we haven't done until just recently.
But it's good to see that we, the money isn't actually going toward costs. We're actually being, we're able to expand and go longer.
Right, absolutely. But yeah, we could be spending probably a million a year, and then we'd be able to maybe get this done in three or four years, but at this rate, it's still gonna take a significant amount of time to get through the city.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair, Your Honor.
Yes.
First off, Lisa, I know this does take a lot of work, so good job on that, but on the budget highlights page, we talk about the building department, the police department, fire department, parks and recreation, you know, the pension funds, but I don't say nothing about the DPS. Are there staffing levels? Is there anything?
Well, our staffing levels are staying the same, there's no changes. And keep in mind, the DPS, the majority of everything for them is paid out of either Act 51 funds, or the water and sewer fund, or the fleet fund. There's very little, other than the buildings and grounds portion, that goes to the general fund.
My point was, you have no highlights for the DPS, so that was my question. Well, you don't, I don't see none here, so, but I know there's, in the big book, there's projects, I know.
Right, and it's, the majority of it is gonna be in those other funds. You're gonna see it in 202, 203, 592, because DPS, all of those workers are doing either main breaks, you know, they're doing water and sewer work, or they're doing road work, so they're being charged out of those funds.
And their staffing levels are okay right now?
There's no change to, there was no request for additional, and there was no reduction recommended either.
That's what we'll, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And just a note, the slide you're referencing was just general fund budget highlights, not the other, the other the funds.
Thank you.
So one more question.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Just, where are the pump stations that we're planning on doing coming into this?
So that is being paid for right now through ARPA funds, which is kind of a restricted revenue fund, so it's not reflected in the budget. You will find it in the capital improvement plan, because, yeah, it's not a fund.
Happy with that plan?
It's in the back of the budget book.
Is it? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Lillian, I think you had something?
Yeah, I just, if you could give me an explanation of how, how does this work when we don't use all the money that we've allotted for projects? And I'm specifically talking about, you know how in this week's payables, we're paying for work that was for '21 and '22? So how does that, how does that affect the budget?
Well, it works a little different depending on the fund. Like, the ARPA funds, those are all done. Like, the ARPA funds, those are all designated for those specific projects. It's kind of the same with Act 51 funds, but what happens is, in the given year, if we budgeted 1.5 million in construction projects and we've only spent 1.3, that $200,000 goes into the overall fund, whether we're using fund balance or contributing to fund balance. It works as a whole. But those projects are allocated for. So the money's still there because they were there, yes.
Okay. Very good, because that's what I wanted to make sure. Like, we didn't use that money somewhere else?
No, well, say, like, office expenses or office supplies for my department. If I have $2,000 budgeted and I only spend 1,000, that money pretty much just goes away. But when we have these large capital items, that money's allocated for and, you know, Hennessy is tracking those as well on their end. Those were large amounts and I had questioned them on that as well, why we were paying so far out for a previous year project. Generally, there's some type of retainage that's held that may not get paid to the next year anyway. But those projects, apparently, there was a lot of follow-up work they had to do to complete them before we could pay.
Okay, and we don't, because it's some delay or whatever, we don't get charged like late fees and?
Not from contractors, no.
Okay.
We are very, with DTE, those types of things, we do, you know, those types of things have late fees, so we're always making sure we're getting them out in plenty of time. But, yeah, no, these are, and the contractors are working with Hennessy. And trust me, we've had contractors that have been looking for payment, whether the paperwork was submitted to Hennessy and then they forwarded it over and it just, sometimes there's a timing issue. But something like that, no, they're well aware that they're not getting paid until everything is complete.
So if I could ask one more question, because Maureen brought up the water and that is, I mean, that is truly, you know, one of the hardest things that we have to do about the water bill is raise those rates. I was curious, so I went back to the last time we paid the Great Lakes Water Authority and actually this month, or I should say February's, payment is actually lower than January's, which kind of surprised me because they normally run, I think, pretty close.
Well, it's all based on usage, just like, we have a master meter that they get reads off of. So it depends on how much water was used in that month.
Is that unusual, though, for us?
For February to be?
Yeah, much lower than, say, January?
It just depends on main breaks, those type, you know, how cold, wet. If we have a lot of main breaks, that water's, you know, running through and that's where the water loss comes in.
Four days with no power too, so people probably weren't using as much water because nobody's taking a cold shower.
Those 28 days in February, 31 in January.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
And since one of the council people already brought it up about unfilled positions, I know we've paid for them. What happens to the money that?
It's the same type of thing. So when I brought the amended budget to council, some of those wages for positions, if they hadn't been filled for six months, I mean, it's a cost savings to the city, but those funds haven't been used. But it goes into the overall, so general fund, at the end of the day, is whether we have all of these various departments, it's one pocket of money. So for the year, if six positions weren't filled, those funds weren't spent, so it becomes part of the amount going into fund balance.
Okay, I just wanted it to be said clear so people could hear that. Does anybody else have anything else? Okay, then we can move on to the next.
All right. So I'm just going to do kind of a highlight of the budget book and what's in here. If you open it, a couple pages, there's a table of contents in there that outlines on which page everything starts. And then it goes into the budget transmittal letter. And within that document, as James stated earlier, this year, we have all of the financial policies built within it. So there's the investment policy, the fund balance policy, all of the ones that are financially related, those are highlighted in there. And then on page 18 is where the general fund summary starts. So there's kind of a summary page there that outlines each department within the general fund. And then as you go through, you'll see, it starts off with the general fund revenues. We do have activity from previous years in there as well as the current year's amended budget and then the requested budget, so that's going to reflect the amount that the departments request it. There's not really much changes in there. Actually, this year, I don't believe there was any change. I think we were pretty much able to fund everybody's requests. And again, everybody's, works with us pretty well on that. There might have been some changes prior to the recommendation coming, but that would have been very early on, working with the departments on that. So within the document, you'll see a lot of numbers there to the left. These reflect the account numbers, which outlines, 101 is always going to be your general fund department. And then the next three set of numbers is going to represent the department. So the very first one on there is 111, that's our city clerk. So each department is assigned a three-digit number that represents them within the fund. And then the last six numbers, that represents what those funds are being spent on. So those are going to be pretty much the same throughout each department that you look at, whether it's a revenue or expenditure. We have a certain set of numbers that are used for revenues. So every department for office supply is going to be 727. Every department for operational supply is going to be 757. Wages is always 706. So obviously, you don't need to know those, but that's what those represent. So you'll start to see kind of a pattern if you spend your late evenings reading through this. So then, within each department, within there, there's subtotals. And then at the end of the revenues, it gives you the grand total for it. And then it moves into the expenditures, works the same way. And then on page 32, those are the special revenue funds. So these are all funded by various sources from the state. The cable fund, again, is from the cable bills. The sanitation fund, that's from the fees for, that's on the water bills for the rubbish collection and the recycling. And then the drug and forfeiture fund, those are all funds that come from seizures. So the major and local funds starts off, those are going to be your 202s and your 203s. So that's going to be, those funds are restricted as to what they can be used for. So again, those all have to be used on items related to the roads. And the major represents your larger roads, like your Lafayette, Fort Park, those types of things. And we have reporting that we have to do to the state, so we have to prove that we're spending these funds appropriately every year. So we get so much for each of them and we have to spend them accordingly.
To the chair. Right-of-way fees, what are those?
Right-of-way fees? So those are, they're sort of based on our Act 51s. It's part of a report each year that we do. We have to, we have to report to them how much we spent on right-of-ways as far as, so that's going to be the section from the sidewalk to the street. And then they give us funds back for those each year. So we have to report how much we spent. It's kind of a silly report to me, anyway. We report how much we spent and they base how much we get the next year based off how much we spent the previous year.
So if we cut the grass, we bill them?
Not necessarily, no. No, no, we have to pay that. But any work that's done, we also have like the metro fees from the AT&amp;T and the cable providers, they come out and do work. So those planning fees have to be paid for out of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, doing a wrong.
No, not at all, you can stop me at any point. On page 42, a couple short pages there on our capital fund. The first one is what we've talked about tonight, those general fund-related capital items and then the water and sewer capital fund. So even though the water and sewer capital funds are coming from the water bill within the water and sewer fund, they're transferred into this fund too accurately. But that makes tracking a little bit easier for what the capital projects are within that fund.
Through the chair, real quick. And Lisa, the numbers that are in red, what does that indicate?
Negative.
43, there's no?
Yep, so that means the expenditures were higher than the revenues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Hopefully, there's not too many reds in there. And then on page 45, you get into your water and sewer fund, your fleet management fund, and your technology services. So you'll see the breakdown. And again, you'll see all the different revenue sources that are collected on the water and sewer side. You'll see the breakdown from the various items that are on the water bills as well as some additional items that we bring in on those.
And a lot of red there.
There's always a lot of red in that fund. On page 53, some of the less talked about funds, because we don't have as much control over those. The library, the component units of the city are the library fund, the economic development authority, and the downtown development authority. So they do set their own budgets. The library fund is funded through the millage of the city. So each year, based on their request is how the millage rate is set for that. And they stay pretty frugal with their money, so that's a good thing. And then the EDC and the DDA, they submit their budgets to us and, but mayor and council does adopt those, so they are part of the budget document.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think this is a great time to talk about the court budget. Why isn't the court budget in this little section?
Well, the court budget used to be. When we were a sole funding unit of the court, it would have been a component unit. However, since the district court was combined with the two other funding units, we no longer adopt the court budget at a line item level. That is done basically through the court management council and then it goes on to, we budget it as a lump sum in the general fund.
Okay, I understand that part and I remember reading that in their agreement. But we're not doing anything but really adopting these other budgets. It's just the same thing. I don't understand. I would really love to see that budget in here. I don't know what we have to do to do that.
Well, if we included it in here, it would be for all three cities because that's how they adopt their budget. So within the general fund in Department 760, you'll see the cities portion. So you'll see the revenue from the parking fines and fees that they send checks over for every month. You'll see that item in there as well as an overall net expenditure for the court. Again, in Department 760, you'll see that in there. The way it's done is really an accounting nightmare. It's not very clean at all.
Right, and it's not open, I guess, and very public?
Agreed.
And I have a problem with that. I know that I was able to see the court, actually, I advised budget for this year. And James, if you would, please find out why they're putting their employee and retirement healthcare benefits together? I would like to know. Because it wasn't like that last year.
Right, they had it completely separated. I don't know why they've combined as far as their line item budget, but I'd be happy to ask.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then we can move on.
Just a couple more items. I won't bore you too much with this. On page 57, this section here gets into the detail behind what the departments are putting into the system. So they're electronically requesting their budgeted items, so they go into our software system. And within that, it's requested of them to put in footnotes. So within whatever line item it is, we request a breakdown of what, you know, if you're requesting $20,000 for materials, what type of materials? So with DPS, they'll have like cold patch and different, all the various items. Some of it, you'll see, there's a lot of detail. Some items are a little bit more self-explanatory, so there's not going to be those footnotes in there. But that gives you an opportunity to kind of look through and see, like, in assessing right now, I can see their operational supplies. And then within that, they've got the breakdown of, you know, the different software programs that they're requesting. So it's kind of a helpful tool. We started giving this to council a few years back so you could kind of see more of what's going on, what's going into the budget behind the scenes. And then the last section of the budget on page 107, we have the personnel summary. Kind of have a highlight of the current year, how many positions are budgeted in each department, what that cost is for wages only, it doesn't include benefits. And then the recommended for the upcoming year. And again, there's no staffing changes, recommend it. I think the only thing you might see is within the police department, the cadets, we've currently been paying for them, but they weren't part of the personnel summary, so we have those built in there now. But they were already current positions. And then you'll see a little bit of the changing with the building department, the code enforcement within there. So that's the only staffing changes, there's nothing else. And then it goes into the capital improvement plan that James already talked about. That's the very last section. So it's just kind of a brief overview of what's in the budget document. And that is all I have. If anybody has any additional questions or, again, if anybody wants to meet with me one-on-one to go over anything, I'd be more than happy to meet with you.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
That's very well done.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you do in your department.
Thank you.
James, you'd like to talk to me about the community, about the capital improvement plan?
Oh, where to start there? So if you want, I can quickly go through what's in it. So the capital improvement plan, this is actually based on the Planning and Enabling Act. It is a requirement for cities to put together a six-year capital improvement plan. We've historically done a five-year schedule of projects in a slightly ambiguous way. This year, it's a lot more specific. Of course, understanding that over the next six years, there's going to be things that change. But we should be able to know the next two to three years, pretty much rock solid, what we intend to do. And we should be able to plan that far out. Every year, this will be redone as projects for the current year will fall off and at the back end, another six years down the road, we'll be planning more projects. And it helps us look forward. So as you go through, similar to the budget, there is a transmittal letter that was written by me to the planning commission, kind of going through some of that background information and some overview of what's in our capital improvement plan. As you get into it, there's a list of the, a list of the city officials, the department heads, city council, planning commission. And then I put in here a couple pages of like an introduction as to what a capital improvement plan is because, you know, it is kind of a foreign topic to a lot of people. And there is some decent information, some references to where we get the authority to do this, the timeline and process, the types of projects that we would be looking to do and where the funding comes from and what the current funding breakdown over the course of this program is. So over the next six years, you know, there's offhand roughly just over $80 million worth of projects put in here. Big thing to note is a significant amount of that is being funded through kind of long-term debt, right? Either the proposed bonds for the water program, the current road bond program that we have, or the state revolving loan fund for the sewer projects and some of the potential water projects as well. So there, you know, while there is a ton of stuff in there, there is a significant amount of debt that we are potentially looking at taking on to fund these things that we need to get done. But that said, there's also still $12 million of general Act 51-funded road projects over those six years. So, you know, keeping with that, about $2 million a year. There's also the $14 million of ARPA projects in there. But it is significant. And then after that page, you've got a summary of all the projects, a listing of all the projects over the next six years, given numbers, project numbers, quick introduction as to what the project is. And then as you go through after that, you actually get a little bit more information. And then, as you go through after that, you actually get a little bit more information on each different project that's in here. And so the next, next number of pages in the capital improvement plan give a brief description, how much is being funded, where is the funding coming from, what's the city's percentage of funding it, how long do we expect the project to take? And so, it is in, it is in an order, it looks like my headings fell off, but the first ones are buildings and ground capital improvements, and then it rolls from there into the construction projects. So these are going to be most of the sewer projects, the water projects, and the road Then there's also some, another section that has to do with some of the equipment updates that we get for the mostly police department and fire. And then at the back of the capital improvement plan, we've got a couple supplemental documents, one of which is the capital improvement form that departments fill out and submit, and you can see kind of the scoring, the scoring system we have at the back that provides us a number as far as the importance of the project and the matrix, if you will. And so that right there, that is the capital improvement plan in a nutshell, and I'm happy to answer any questions there.
To the chair.
Yeah.
It's about, when we get asked about individual roads and when it's on the schedule for, you know, getting reconstructed, repaving, and whatnot, is, how difficult, I mean, I know, is it, how difficult of a process is it to reorganize the order that's laid out in a document like this? Because I know we've had to deal with Richmond and London, and, you know, we try to make accommodations, but it's almost like it's just one emergency after, after another with really bad roads getting identified.
Right, well, and that's, that's truly the idea behind the asset management system, right? Couple months back, I think it was in August or October, I'm looking at John for a nod, you guys approved our, our road asset management plan. Basic idea behind that is we have, have somebody go out, actually go through and rate the physical condition of the road through a system called Pazer, which is the pavement, the pavement, asphalt, surface evaluation rating, I think. And so that, roads get rated on a scale of one to 10, one being Richmond right now, 10 being a brand-new road, right? So most often, a road stays a 10 for one season, and then it slowly degrades. I believe a road rated between seven and 10 is considered in good condition. A road between three and seven, might be four and seven, but a road in there is considered fair, and then everything below is poor. And you'll see, you can actually go on the Michigan Transportation Asset Management Council's website, and you can kind of look across the state and see, you know, statewide, how are roads, you know, how are we faring, right? How, what percentage of roads across the state fall into that fair, good, and poor, right? But the idea behind doing all this is you take roads that might be in that fair condition, not failing yet, but not good, and you try and find ways to get those roads into the good condition, because those are the roads that if you can do that, it will, you'll spend less money making more fair roads good than you will making one failed, poor road even fair. So the idea is trying to stretch road money as far as you possibly can to improve the useful service life of the entire road system. And that, that's the asset management in a nutshell.
Yeah, I mean, that logically makes sense, but from, of course, from a resident perspective, when they hear how we're better off not addressing, it costs more money to address roads in poor to get them to fair, that doesn't...
Right, well, and so, so the idea is, once a road is maybe at a three, but not yet a one, the treatment for a road that's at, say, a three versus a road that's at a one is the exact same. Tear it down, rebuild it. Whereas a road that's at a four or five has a completely different method of treatment at that point, which is less expensive and can, you can spread more. So, yeah, we've got a lot of roads in that really poor condition, but if we fail to address the roads that are in that, that middle bit, we're going to have even more.
I mean, is, is there, like, a recommended percentage breakdown, or do we just do the best we can?
So you can, there's asset management software that actually Hennessy uses, it's actually out of the, out of, it's either Northern or Michigan Tech, I think Michigan Tech, and it's called Roadsoft, and it can run scenarios. You tell it, this is the amount of money we can spend every year on roads, and what it'll do is tell you, here's how, if this is your goal, here's how you can achieve it, right? And that's kind of how we eventually, like, early on, when we started doing this 10-year road, road plan, that's how we started identifying the roads.
To the chair.
Yes.
What I would like to know is, how often does this asset management person go out and evaluate the roads?
I think we've been trying to do it every two years.
Is it two?
John's confirming it. We've been trying to rate the roads every two years. The last one would have been 21, yep, September 21, so hopefully, we'll try and get out there again this year.
To the chair, do we pay every time they go out and reassess?
Yeah, there is a cost to it. I think last time, we did have a grant. If, you know, it's kind of, what's, what's the better value? Is it having somebody on staff who's been trained in it, who can, can do the rating, and then having the time available to do it? Or is it better to quickly, instead of pulling people off the road to do it, just have, have somebody who's trained and does it all the time come in and knock it out?
Just out of curiosity, like, approximately, how much do we spend to do that?
You know, I honestly, it's been two years, I couldn't even, couldn't even wager, I guess, right now, what we spent last time.
I'm just wondering, because, I mean, if that money could be used to help repair a road, I don't want to see $200,000 go for...
Oh, no, it's not, it's not that high. We're talking 20-ish, yes, is what John's mouthing to me.
Twenty, thirty.
Yeah. Right.
To the chair.
That's a Hennessy.
Sorry.
Are you done?
Okay.
Sorry.
One more question, because you brought up debt. Where in the budget do we see our long-term loan debt?
So the only fund that has debt right now is the water and sewer fund. It's going to be the various SRF bonds, the DUAA debt, as well as from the water meter system from years ago. So it's a line item within there.
Okay. We don't have any outstanding loans for equipment or something?
Well, yeah, there are some, those are in there as lease payments.
Lease pay, okay.
Yep, so...
We would have the bond payments to the road bonds, but that's covered under...
Right.
An authorized millage, so it's not really going to show up here.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything else you wanted to report tonight on this?
No, that was it. That was, that's your recommended 23, 24 budget. Apart from the capital, I mean, we're balanced, we're, we're right there.
And again, I want to thank Lisa and everybody back there. This is, this is really nice to, thank you. James, you did good on this, thank you. There's no further discussion on the study session, so we will adjourn this at 7:00.